Very nice.
I don't know about that, that's better.
How's that girl doing?
She said three.
Oh my gosh. Oh dear.
Yep.
Now, her teeth and all that good stuff.
Oh yeah, she got her teeth really.
You see.
Oh my gosh.
You see. It hurts.
You should run in charge of your place, you're a man.
Yeah.
Very, very cute.
I don't want to do another life is like before they.
Oh yeah, life is crazy.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
And we don't have to.
Speaking of this name, sorry.
I did not recognize any of them.
I mean, it's just a part of.
Yeah.
I might have to be there because.
Francois?
Good, we get a couple of them.
What we got?
Yeah. So, let me say.
How are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, look at.
I think, I think it's kind of.
Hey, Ligon.
Well, you know, we got.
But this is very different doing a solar. And I don't know if we can talk about it or not, but I just look at what other guys are doing and how they're doing it. And if you want to go, I'll give you a start figuring out.
Hey, guys. What's that? I have to look at it a little closer. Not really all, no.
When you start to speak, you're going to microphone or microphone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright. Are you?
I don't know if it's cold or not. I like being warm in here.
Right.
Where's my, where I forget it? We can talk about that tomorrow.
I was ready for her.
I was.
You ready, you on it? No, Jack, Jack, hold on.
Testing one, two, three.
See if Francois is here.
Francois, are you there?
No, she is, Ligon.
Okay.
Alright.
It's even better.
It is six thirty-two, we're going to call this meeting to order, we have a lot of things to go over. The, um, determine the presence of a quorum, can everybody hear me alright? Think we have a full complement of our members tonight. First thing on tonight's meeting as usual is approval of the agenda. Uh, I'm going to add one thing that was not added or not on there, and that we, Fay is going to do a little presentation on what a solar SUP application fee would be. So, we're going to add that down at one of the last items, number G. Okay? Next, as we move on, minutes.
There was a correction, a correction needs to be made. I put Faye's with the name Crickler, isn't it, some? And said, and the Secretary of Agriculture was made by Faye Crickler. President was made by Faye Duke.
Okay. You didn't change your name?
No.
Alright, very good.
It was in family, but not the list.
Any other changes, additions, anything that was missed? If not, can I get a motion to approve? Uh, first, is it second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, moving to minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Um, first item on the, first off, I'd like to cover one little thing, and that is our COVID practices. Everybody knows that these type of meetings are still exempt from some of the normal regulations, uh, governing, social distancing and mask and all that stuff, however, we try to practice what is safe. So, anybody that wants to get up and move about the room and distance themselves from their other, uh, members of the commission, please feel free, I don't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable. Oh, okay. Um.
Not related to COVID.
Okay, next item on the agenda, or first item on the agenda, is potential dwelling units, ordinance A1 agriculture and C1 conservation. Ligon has come up with a proposal that we add something to the ordinance that would allow additional dwelling units in these particular zoned areas. I'm sure everybody has read his comments, um, pertaining to that, he has some, that's another one, um, I'm sorry. And I don't know that what is already an ordinance would prohibit what is being proposed here. Um, so I'm a little confused on the A1 and C1, and A1 allows for, um, I think in, uh, section three dash one dash ten, conservation says accessory units. Definition of accessory unit, uh, in definition seems like to me it talks about whatever the, if the property is residential, you can put another residential unit on there. So, maybe I'm misreading that.
Is it, is it an existing code?
Uh, yes. In mine. Three dash one dash ten says, uh, accessory uses in buildings, and in that, this allows for residential units in C1. So, and it says uses permitted by right, single-family detached dwellings, okay? And is this, would that be considered an accessory use in building if people are living in the C1 and A1? And the definition of that is twenty dash three, and I don't mean to throw muddy the water on this, but.
Three, what was it, three dash, what was the original one, I'm sorry, three dash one?
Dash ten.
Three dash ten?
Three dash one dash ten.
Oh, okay, three dash one, accessory use in building permitted by right, and then you say that, that's in A1 and C1?
Uh, well, what's in A1 is everything in C1.
That's right, okay, so, and then the definition for accessory use, that, that's twenty what?
Twenty dash three. Accessory use buildings, a subordinate use of buildings is customerly identical and to, and located upon the same lot occupied by the main use of the building. So, I just want to clarify that that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's close, but I don't see dwelling.
Well, it's those accessory use of buildings, building is a dwelling.
Main use of building, yeah, I, it's a good catch, subordinate use or building customer, but I think what's lacking there, it does not to me, that, that wouldn't, um, someone came and went to build another dwelling to live in, I don't think that would quite pass muster.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's actually.
Wasn't necessarily clear to me.
I mean, I look at it all the time.
I don't know, Mr. Crickler wants to know what definition of building is.
Building is twenty dash twenty-four.
And the definition then is?
Any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls for the housing or enclosure of persons, animals, or property in any tone. Building or structures divided into separate parts by firewalls and having separate plumbing, electrical heating, drainage, ventilation, each part so divided shall be deemed a separate structure.
And the ordinance now says a dwelling, correct?
Yeah.
Based on that definition, it would cover the dwelling.
Well, let's amend the code and put this as a special use, um, yeah, that, uh, I mean, I guess, I guess that, yeah.
Wait a minute, one at a time, one at a time, please. Ligon?
I mean, I don't think that's ever been done, or someone came in and it's written that way. I guess it's very common, something like other building. Sean, is that, you would interpret it, I mean?
And I don't ever recall the planning commissioner or the board supervisors ever discussing it in this context. Mr. Crickler, you had something to add?
Okay. Pete? But there's always somebody out there looking for a loophole every day.
Correct.
And I mean, that's a whole idea by the time to do something new and do it, right, close to loophole.
Okay.
And that's just why.
Yeah, I, I don't think, you know, people realize there's maybe eight loopholes, and I think what Sean says, I would say it's somewhat vague, you go to building, I think if you want to interpret it, I think it's fairly debatable.
Okay, so.
I wouldn't say it's totally clear.
The consensus would be that it needs clarified.
I think it's probably.
Okay. Just wanted to get that out of the way.
Okay, like I said. I have a neighbor who has, they own, they're like three of them, they're building a large garage, apartment. That's all well, now, individually they have more interesting, but I'm wondering how that application could go through. They apply it based on the fact that they could have that guest housing over the garage.
If they have, you know, the guests, the finished space over garages hasn't really been discussed, we've just been saying a separate unit, but I think we probably should bring in the apartments as well into any kind of definition. We start kind of working out kind of rough parameters, how we would move forward, I think that that would, if someone came in now, as long as they get the sign, I mean, it's, again, it's kind of a vague, debatable. Generally what we've done, people want a finished space above a barn, which is very popular these days, as long as they have the minimum acreage, six acres, with that dwelling as well, I would, I would be okay with it.
I'd kind of make it in view of the potential problems on these three to five acre parcels. Uh, this is like an amputate right, maybe want to consider setting it special use, just to kind of.
Yes.
And maybe, so, I think like.
Yeah, I, I think the idea that it's by right now, again, is kind of a, you know, you could interpret it that way, but it also could be interpreted the other way, I think it's, what they call it, literally the term is fairly debatable, so.
Right.
Right, so maybe we should kind of, we put some more wind in ourselves to move forward with something that's really more clear.
I notice you have written up some, uh, proposed amendments, no, that's wireless communication, I'm sorry, um, wrong subject, uh, you have made some, uh, recommendations, but we don't have any particular ordinance or anything drafted at this time.
Right.
So, what I would propose is that we assign this to one of the committees to look at this and, uh, iron out all the, the, uh, issues here.
Well, let me just first ask from, just our people, commission members, is the idea of letting it to the A1 and C1, we're not going to talk about the R or anything like that. We're not, and also we're saying not grandfather lots, you under three acres, we're not talking about you, we're talking about people that go from three acres to five nine nine, and ten acres to nineteen point nine, is that, does that, everybody understand that? Because once you have over that acreage, you have twenty, you can do an accessory dwelling basically by right. So, is that sort of consensus that that's where we would move forward with this developing something for those A1 and C1?
That's fine with me, I don't.
I guess.
Have an issue with him.
And then my next question would be, do we want to make kind of supplemental regulations to talk about the ADU itself, like, you know, Orange County says it only can be eight hundred square feet, uh, I think things like only two bedrooms. If we really want to kind of get into a little deeper conversation, I guess, other than the, you know, the physical size of the ADU, which I think should be inferior to the main building, um, then talk about short-term rental versus long-term rental, is that something that, some people would see having an ADU as a, as a, as a way to generate short-term sort of economic benefits in tourism, and that has obviously spillover effect, and otherwise, also, we sort of struggle with the fact that we don't have any long-term rental properties. So, from a policy perspective, which way do we want to sort of, do we want to kind of open up a little niche where people have rental properties, or open up a niche where people can do either one that they want to, rental short-term or long-term, so that's sort of things that we could kind of work out in the next few weeks and months.
Well, it seems to be without a doubt that there is a shortage of affordable housing within the county, um, and I would think that we need to write up some kind of ordinance to cover that and add in those particular, uh, qualifications that you were talking about. What I would propose is we sign this to a committee on the, uh, planning commission, and they can work with you and get something ironed out on this. Pete?
I have a question against the Ligon, and how will this impact a lot of these places in the county that their zoning ain't what it should be, or is not right? I mean, how is this going to impact if we do A1 and C1 on a place like Mallard, that's A1?
Good question.
Now, I'm sure Melbourne is private HOA, right, Melbourne subdivision.
Well, it's a HOA, but if we pass something here, uh, being a HOA, I don't know, Sean, if they're HOA, can they stop it, or if we pass something here, would they be able to do that later?
It depends on which is more restricted, if we are more restrictive, I think we can do that, I want to confirm that, but I'm pretty sure that's what the rule is. Typically, HOAs can make things more restrictive than what the general laws.
My understanding of Melbourne is that they are more restrictive, so it would be allowable for the zoning, but if they're uncovenants, that said you can't do it, you can't do it, and remember, we're also talking about this, a special use permit to begin with, you know, so.
Because in C1, there's a lot of subdivisions in Madison that's in C1.
And that's why I kind of brought up the grandfather lots, because there are a lot of C1, A1 lots that are grand, that are grandfathered, so that, you know, this would not extend to those lots, you need to be, have a minimum, and be, be clear in the language that it doesn't extend to grandfather.
There's a, a lot of properties in Madison that are zoned, to me, it's always been rather strange, and in a recent event involving BZA and the church down in Axol, where they were trying to subdivide, and it was the whole property, the church is like five acres, they were trying to subdivide it to put it, sell additional houses on the property, and it's owned A1, it's never been A1, so I asked one of the guys on the BZA, uh, why it's zoned that way, and I was, I was just a, I don't know, maybe kind of making his chain or whatever, but he said that's because Madison County in the past did not want any, uh, houses or whatever, they wanted to keep it rural as possible, whether that was the case or not, I don't really know, that's what he said, and he's been around a lot longer than me. Okay, Fay?
Um, yeah, as I said before, well, first of all, I have two areas right near me that are subdiv, that are subdivisions, I guess you'd say, I do not know what they're covenants, what they say, I know people, I know people can find out, but there are two of them, one's a large one and one's a smaller one, and I know that a resident of the smaller one feels it's very restrictive, and she's had problems getting rid of her land now, because she's got land she doesn't leave, but it seems to be that it's not about us, it's about what she signed when she bought the land, so, I don't know, I don't know, I just know there are others other than Mallard here in this county, and I don't know how this would impact it, the other thing is, um, and, and what you said, um, Mr. Chairman, about the reason why it was set in A1, and my question before last meeting was, is this about density, is it about rental, is it about best use of our, use of our, like, what is this really about?
I don't know.
And if we don't know what that's about, and you had assigned this to my committee before, you have the reservation, right?
Yes.
Uh, and I haven't had a meeting yet since I was waiting on tonight, no point to do it until we do, you know, I haven't walked up tonight, so, um, you know, I'd like to know some of those answers before we start putting in paper and.
Fay, I, I would take a guess, you say it's about density, is it about housing, what else did you say?
Rental, but now.
Rental?
So, do we want to put any kind of stipulation on anything about having to rent it versus having it be a rental property versus, I mean, another property that someone could live in?
I think.
Do you want to say that, that it has to be owned by the prominent property, I mean, there's so many things I think about is, how would you, how do you want this?
Well, I would say, I would say the answer to all those are yes.
Ligon's comments, uh, I think has addressed some of that stuff, and there's going to be a lot of questions before this is over with, and I'm sure y'all will get a lot of answers in the committee, I mean, we could sit here all night and beat this up, because it is kind of a strange thing.
Well, I, I think it's only have a, it seems to me you have a general idea that we want to move in this direction, so, if we, if we do a committee, I mean, I can just bring something back to you in two weeks, we could all have to look at, or if you want to break off next week, the committee wants to meet one afternoon here, I'll be happy to just show you, the committee something that I, 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 I mean, a couple hours of working on it from the computer, I could probably have something that could all look at and tear apart and bring back to the board the next week after next.
Fay, you want to work with Ligon on that?
I will, I can maybe let you know what they see.
And who else is on that? Who else would meet?
I'm also on that, um, yes, Nathan, um, Francois, and E. I. Thank.
You have a list of all the committees, Ligon?
No, no, we have you on it.
Francois, Nathan, and E. I. Thank, so you just have to let me know.
Fay, Pete, Nathan, Ligon.
Fay, Pete, okay, I'll, I'll just email everybody, we'll try to find time.
Alright, we'll go here and, um.
And if everyone can't, can't make it, we should definitely keep everybody in the email loop.
Or I can set up a Google Meet if you want.
Okay, Ligon?
Okay, we good on where we're going with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Alright, um, any other comments from the planning commission on that?
I'm kind of amazed with that one, but we, we seem to automatically be saying we don't have a short-term rental, but what about tourism, I say?
No, I thi, I think that's a very good question, yeah.
Or about what, Nathan?
Tourism, too.
Well, I mean, you know, that's why I kind of want to know.
Great, great, not a logic, and like you want to do it twice, certainly no other logic for tourists.
And I will say one thing, I met someone at a short-term rental in the county just the other night, that's a nice one, I'm actually, I, I'm totally amazed at the income that it generates, I'm just, I mean, I, I just.
That the assault process, as my understanding, this was not about short-term rentals and tourism.
Yeah, oh, I, I, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Well, that's, I think it's a, I think as Steve says, I think it's a fair conversation to have, is, you know, there are economic benefits, but again, kind of what drove this was the idea there are no rental properties in the county, so, those are some conversations that we definitely.
And the rap, and rapid annual regional housing study says that we need additional affordable housing in Madison County for residents, okay?
But as for short-term rental, like Airbnb stuff, we've got massive amounts.
We do.
I mean, and they, I know some people, Cardi, you know, we know some people that make amazing amounts of money.
Unless we're careful they can use this, you know, whether they can.
Yes, they can.
And they're, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
Amazing where they are, and you have them.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we're moving on to the next item, and that is consideration for an up-to-date streamlining of the wireless communication facility ordinance, uh, there's been numerous changes over the years since that, uh, ordinance was written, I think it was even before Cardi's time, um, so things have changed since then, and, um, this is the first time I've seen what Ligon is proposing, and I imagine everybody else, I haven't had a chance to look at it, uh, and this, and streamlining this could help out with our use of broadband, uh, increasing broadband within the county, depending on how this goes, because I think it might be the answer eventually to the broadband issue, but that's just my humble opinion, um, and the other consideration I would throw out at this time is that we have a fee right now of two thousand dollars for any wireless communication facility on the books, uh, if we are trying to, uh, lower more of these, uh, facilities in the county, we might want to look at that aspect of it also, the two thousand dollars, so, uh, we could.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With regard to that, remember the application clause is not the only clause which counts, and it's a bear, um, we are currently in litigation regarding, essentially defending a wireless application.
Yes.
And there are lots of fees associated, there are lots of costs associated with passing any of these types of, um, permits or, you know, speculations or mitigations.
I agree a hundred percent, and I'm just throwing that out as something to consider, and I'm aware of the, uh, situation that you're talking about.
Well, I'll just say, as far as, after much delay and procrastination, I finally in the last couple days sat down and I got it, I did get an email and from someone who is, well, it was Ms. McQuary, to try to identify those parts that we know we no longer can ask because there's new state laws that have come around, so, I'll point those out, what they are, but what I've done is tried to take a, I don't know, fifteen-page document and maybe make it a three or four-page document, it is very verbose, it is very repetitive, it is, and remember, it's a special use permit anyway, so it really gives an opportunity to, to review each, each one on a case-by-case basis, but what I've tried to do, I only got about two-thirds through it, you'd see I just put in, uh, you, you can have this to look at just to kind of see my thinking on this, uh, but my idea is to knock through it next day or two, and then give you, uh, the red text would be put into it, you know, I get after it's been reviewed, and, and again, it's a lot of words in it, and ultimately, if you're going to, if you're going to scale it back, you're just going to have to take some words out, I think there are a lot of things that are, again, just repetitive and not necessary, uh, so I'll keep working through it and hopefully next few days be done, and then next meeting, we can kind of look and see, Sean and I can talk about it beforehand, look and see what I've reduced it down to, and kind of go from there, so I just want to get, kind of give you an idea tonight, you know, where I was headed with it.
Alright, uh, as far as the planning commission, Fay, I'm going to assign that one to you also, and my question, Ligon, is have you, uh, talked to people over in Green County, I understand they just recently redid theirs to make it in compliance with the state code?
At the last meeting, you found it to the business committee.
I did.
Didn't change it.
Thank you. Well, the business, I had to change that, I'm sorry, uh, the business committee is going to be involved in some other stuff also, so, I had to change that around a little bit, okay? But, did, did you talk to Green County on what they had done recently?
No, I did, but I, I will look at it, I kind of made a decision to work within our current ordinance, and just sort of scale it down, but I, I, I have looked at a few, I'll look at Green tomorrow, yeah, I can. But I, I, I have looked at a few, I'll look at Green tomorrow, yeah, I can.
Okay.
This is just a start, I just kind of want to see...
They've already gone through all of this.
Right. And if it's, I'll look at tomorrow, but if it looks good, maybe we can borrow theirs. But I'm not against, you know, all this going, changing the whole thing based on someone that has already has an adopted ordinance that works.
Yeah.
That's fine too, so I'll look, I'll make a note for looking at Green.
Okay. Fay?
The other one that I saw, that has a long one that will be commuted, well, we missed the code there, Page County. And I was surprised with what they had done.
We don't want a long one.
It was longer and more difficult.
Okay, we still...
They called there, instead of about wireless, they call it telecom. Because when I talked to them, I asked, what does, what do you mean by telecom? And it was, it's just a different word, is what it means, for cell towers and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the goal is to, we make it a little condensed, a little easier to understand. It also kind of maybe helps us, people being able to pick it apart. Because right now, it's, it's just way complicated, I think.
Anybody that went over that last application that was filed would probably agree 100%.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I just say one thing about that, if you're going to sign it to our committee?
Yes.
I'd like to just, how should we, get the first one down on the A and B first. When we need next time, this will work on, and by then, maybe you can have, then we'll have to have another meeting. Right now, I have everybody, okay, that's it.
All right, let me, let me say this to the committee chairman, it's probably going to be a busy year. You can delegate, even though this is assigned to your committee, you can delegate it to one of your members that they can work on it at the same time. Okay? So that might be what you want to do, try to, okay? All right. Anything else on wireless communication facility, changing the ordinance? If not, another item came up is review regulations code related to political signs. Mr. Webb?
Somebody made me put this on the agenda, so that's why I put it on there. So I want to talk about it real quick, I wouldn't do anything. We haven't really had any complaints. Anything that is not compliant with state law or regardless of what our code says, the same thing in Loray. If we have these codes, you have to take them down for this, couldn't be associated, we don't enforce them. Just leave it that, political signs eventually take care of themselves. That's the way I look at it. So I, I wouldn't change or do anything.
But it is in there now.
Right, and, and it's, it would not...
And it's just one little paragraph.
Right.
That could be taken out relatively easy, but you're...
Oh, I either would take it out totally or don't amend it, right.
I would, it's just my opinion, I would take it out. Because there's a lot of stuff in there that's irrelevant. And there's also some things that need to be fixed and changed, like we still don't know what a definition of an event venue is. We need a definition for that, we don't have that. So, but there would be, me, I would just take it out.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, any, any other recommendations from the planning commission on that issue? Fay, Nan?
Are you talking about political signs, are you bringing up the event venue?
No, oh, yes, it's just, I would have a reason for doing this and changing the ordinance. The ordinance has a lot of things in it that need to be amended and changed and cleaned up, okay? And the event venue definition is not there, and it needs to be added in Article 20, as to what it is. There's no definition as to what it is, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I think there is some of that issue, but, oh.
Okay, well, I can, I can look into that.
Okay. Francois?
What about if the political sign has some profanity?
Yeah, that could be a really interesting Supreme Court case. I mean, I, I don't know.
What was your question?
If, if a political sign had profanity in it, I mean, that'd be interesting, I, I don't know.
Are you referring to one that you have seen recently? Okay. Anybody else? It's a total different issue as far as I'm concerned, but I'm not an attorney. Well, VDOT controls the signs and they're VDOT right away, which to me...
That'd be the state, the state law definitely.
Right. Greg, you want to jump in on that?
Is, it's a felony issue, it was a case, I don't have it in front of me, I read it this morning, I think it was City of Ames, does that, does that sound familiar to anybody?
In Virginia?
No, so it's, as a United States Supreme Court decision, this relates to, you know, what content can be regulated. The first amendment, and so when you can regulate convention, that sort of thing. I think this is an issue that we will probably need to take some attention to, there are some more pressing matters. But it's really not a good idea to have law on the books that have then declared unconstitutional, other than the state Supreme Court. But the other part of it is, you know, because of some of the issues that are currently presenting themselves, it might be appropriate to revisit what we can and cannot conduct regularly. So it's kind of, to the extent that profanity, however that's defined, if you may recall, that our United States Supreme Court said, I can't define it, but I know when I see it. You know, there is an inherently subjective standard here. And we want to make sure that we are treading very lightly, we may want to find ourselves, you know, and get another lawsuit on this issue.
Because that's expensive for the county, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Perhaps we revert to what George Carlin defines as the seven words of...
And that was based on a Supreme Court decision. No, that was, was based on the several communications regulation.
Yeah.
I used to know the seven words were...
So, planning commission recommend removal or leave it where it is and ignore it, move on? Peter?
Ligon, could you explain your position that you would prefer to just leave it as is?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even pay for an ad for it personally. I don't think it's, if it succeeds, you know, a higher law, state, or in this case, federal supersedes it. I guess we have the same thing in Loray. I don't, I don't see any reason to just let it go. Sean's, it's a fine argument, but there are a lot of things, we've got a self-tire ordinance, it has things that are sort of contrary to state law right now. Of course, we're changing, yeah, I think self-tires are obviously much different than political signs. But there's, I don't want to say there's no win, but with free speech, things like this, I just, if it's on personal property and it's political, it is, it is their protected speech. And I would just leave it at that. And that's what I've told people, someone came and called me about it and pointed it out in the code. And I said, well, if you go out to the property with me, we'll go ask them, take it down. They said they weren't going to do that, I said, okay. So, but of course, I was joking, but I'm, I'm just saying, we, we don't have the ability to do it anyway, to take someone's sign on a property. So, but again, all the, all the municipalities have this exact same language to some degree. But again, totally invalidated it.
Well, we could, we could leave this particular issue of eliminating that paragraph up to the Board of Supervisors and put it on the agenda for the next joint meeting and make a recommendation at that time. If the planning commission recommends no change, then, or a change in it, then the Board, be up to the Board to do whatever they want to do.
If it doesn't hold water, do away with it, that's what I said, we're talking about this more than where they needed it.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
Just get, just get rid of it totally.
All right. Moving on. So that will be on the agenda for the next joint meeting? Okay. The next interesting subject is discussion of what constitutes an authority. We've heard a lot about authorities recently, especially if you've been reading all the broadband stuff that Peter and Francois had, have been looking up and what's been in the newspapers and so forth. And Mr. Greg has agreed to give us a little presentation. And he also wrote up a little spiel on it, which everybody has a copy of, exactly what an authority is and how it's created and its responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Greg?
Thank you. And as it's pretty clear, what I've written down is exactly what else to say. So the answer to that question, does Madison County have the ability to create a company's infrastructure slash property authority? The answer to that question is yes. The statutory authority for this is under section 56, that's 484, with some change point 7, point 4. Where it becomes kind of tricky is whenever we're competing with private entities that are providing the services in Madison County. Based on what I have heard, there is little to note, you know, broadband in the county, which is why this is an issue in the first place. Where we have to be a little careful, the SEC will actually give us a, basically a voucher permit to try to put something together. And as soon as it becomes financially profitable, that private enterprise gets in. If you have more than three providers, if you have three or more providers coming to the marketplace, then we, and we've got to share our facilities with any of the groups who might come in. Again, there are a lot of pro-business competitive things that are set forth. But hopefully, we're in a position in several years where there are private enterprises that want to do this. The SEC can also revoke our rights if we don't get into the market, because we haven't done anything worse than promising to do it. The reason I mention that is because we need to be very careful if we're going to move archives setting this up. We need to make sure we have done everything we can possibly do so that we get the ground running. In other words, when we apply the State Corporation Commission, we should have already spoken with vendors who can install lines, if that's what we intend. We should have already spoken with the Rattan Service Authority if they are willing to allow the county to use its poles to run this additional cable line. Now, I don't know the logistics of how that would work. As y'all are aware, there is currently litigation pending in the United District of Portland, Western District of Virginia gave a citation for that about a month or so ago. One thought is, we wait to see what that litigation does. I would submit that litigation may be the starting point for whatever you form your authority. But in the meantime, we have already spoken, there's a focus, whatever it might be, we've already spoken with the Rattan Service Authority.
RDC.
RDC, sorry, I'm, yeah, sorry. Too, too many actors in this. Have they spoken with RDC and other people who have tall, tall structures? You know, where we may be able to take advantage of those, of those facilities. The as to what an authority can do is basically, you know, pretty broad, it's under Virginia, section 15.2. 15.31, yeah, here it is, 15.2 dash 5431. You can issue revenue bonds, you can, you can actually sue and be sued, you can establish your rates, you can enforce the rates. As I said, you can issue bonds. There is some consideration of the fact that you have the power of eminent domain. I forgot, I think it's, I haven't tried that with, or I don't understand, tried it with limited success because Virginia's eminent domain law is somewhat cumbersome. Some purposes we're trying to use it for. There's also some other question about the T-Lo case with regards to private property and eminent domain. So that area of the law is a little murky. Like in terms of whether we have the authority, whether we have the ability to create an authority, the answer to that question is yes. All rural counties formed one, Orange County, Magic, Louisiana County, I, I think even Page County was kind of a rate of one their own. But having an authority and having broadband are two entirely separate matters. We need to make sure that we have a business plan in place and an action plan before we take that with the corporation permission. Because that will start to block runs. Something I would suggest to those of you on the committee, look at what, you know, some of our neighbors are doing. Orange County apparently made a fair amount of progress, although not in my neighborhood, with a company they've set up called Fiber Lane. Which is set up to, and I think that they're already accepting applications for broadband. And what I would suggest we meet with them about is, you know, basically, how have you done it? How did you identify your antenna sources? How did you decide where to put your line? You know, whether it was on RDC lines or, you know, whatever utility company may have that. If it's not a utility company, what else might be suitable for these things? So that's, that's my report on that. You know, the decade answers, can we form an authority? The answer to that question is yes.
But we have...
Good idea, I would say probably, but you need to do a lot of concrete work before we, you know, process it.
Well, we have, we'd have to send an application to the SEC?
The state corporation.
Right. And would we have to have any kind of a plan or anything with that?
No, they're basically simple. I brought the articles in corporation for all rural counties, and it is, as you can see, one and a quarter page plus seven. And all it does is cite the state, the authorizing statute, you know, the Wireless Service Program Act. There's a declaration by the Board of Supervisors that we have areas where counties are unserved or underserved. And we're to determine that within the public health and welfare will be better served by the expansion of the service.
And in the end, this authority would be much, very much like the water authority, what's it, RSA? That it would be a profit-making organization. For certain...
Within, like...
Within, but that would be the goal, or the authority to continue.
And, and remember, this came up with the Rural Electrification Act and some of what was happening in the 30s and 40s. You know, the idea was not necessarily to earn a profit, the idea was to provide it as excessively as possible. In other words, you know, with electricity, the goal was providing people more than the goal of profitability. If you rely on a profit motive to serve in unpopulated areas, they would never get any services because it's never cost effective.
So that would not be a requirement?
Sean, then you described, we're meeting for the first time tomorrow night as a task force that the Board created at their last meeting. And I mean, one conceivable model would be that the county would actually provide the service. But I think that's quite unlikely. I think a, a concept that is more likely is that the county, the authority acting with its authority delegated by the county would try to facilitate, not provide, not fund, at least certainly not fund in total, but facilitate provision of high-speed, affordable broadband service.
If, and I'm thinking out loud on this, it didn't search this issue, but, you know, if we're basically a chamber of commerce group, we can do that without any specific authorization. I mean, the idea that we could call it, let's say, we'd really like it really broadband, then that does not involve any action by the government.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think I have, I have, and I agree with you, Peter. I have been using the word authority in a, in a different sense. It's, my idea was task force extended almost.
Well, it's, the word amendment, that was, that was...
No.
Using authority as a term of art.
Right.
Would you some bad concern moving into the task force is really understanding what the authority's ability is? The idea of standing up an ability prior to understanding your own direction, like you referenced, the business plan, would seem foolish in the sense that they could take on debt. There's lots of liabilities that go along with it. If you're acting as a facilitated body, that's great, and please bring us internet, I think everybody in the brother wants it. But you don't use that term. I think everybody in the brother wants it, but don't use that term correctly. And there's a very close association.
And associated with that, there is the possibility of a hybrid model where you find a franchisor to come in, or a dis- franchisee in this case, who would, you know, basically, you know, for profit or attempted profit, do what they promised to do. Because you were authorized to issue bonds and that sort of thing, does not mean you have to do that. In fact, I would discourage that until we have a better sense of it. And again, that's why I think probably a helpful exercise would be looking how other counties might be approaching this issue because as Mr. Wark said in an earlier meeting, it feels like our neighbors have made significant progress in these areas and we want to find out what they have actually done. It's easy to have a headline. I do know that with Orange's new efforts, I'm not aware of anybody who has customers. It could be they don't have customers yet.
We, we have done that and, and we have to do it. There's task force in much greater depth. The Francois's that I had made contact with the neighboring counties.
That's why I'm just going to introduce that. The two authorities being used in too late. So in Alabama, it's very much a managing coordinating body with staff, very much, you know, roots on the ground, but it doesn't have, it's not spending money on, maybe funding money from the county to a subsidiary, but it does not do anything itself in coordination. And in, in Orange, they had an authority like that, that wasn't getting anywhere. So they did that and went to get a subsidiary that had for the financial.
Pete, let me ask the question, just so I understand. When we talked about this authority and the board said that they were looking into it, is what we're accomplishing here, the board has appointed a task force and the task force is going to do a job and report back to the board and then the board's going to tell the planning commission where they want them to proceed to. Is that what we're doing?
At this point, I didn't know that the planning commission would be involved any forward anymore. I thought the task.
Until the board appoints us to do something.
Unless the board appoints us to do something.
Right now, it's a task commission that's answered to the board.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. I just want to be sure that's what we're getting.
They, I mean, they should be presenting a vote for it.
I understand.
Vote the planning commission and the board. I mean, it is our ultimate responsibility, but I mean, all the planning, you need to hear this information.
Okay.
Composed by someone you remember.
Okay. And it will be on the agenda, I'm sure, if that's first of all.
Do you want to add?
Do you want to add the members for the task force?
Mr. Chairman?
Kevin and myself, and Francois, Peter, and Mike.
So we're having a meeting tomorrow. I'm glad you may want to show up.
What time?
Five o'clock, right here.
We are on.
We may be.
Five o'clock.
This is what.
Okay.
My floor is a pass for four points. Thank you, Mark.
As, as all of you know, because you read the memo, Francois and I did, we did have what is called the broadband committee. The concept of an authority is a concept that in part lends more heft to the effort. And it, an authority would have governmental authority subject to the board's dictates. The board would be in a position to control what the authority does. But having more heft gives us a greater chance of succeeding as an authority rather than a committee. And the point of the task force, as I understand the board's action, was to look into the issues preliminary to actually creating an authority if we deem an authority appropriate. So that's what the task force is doing.
The authority though, just, maybe I'm invested. The authority can take on their own, they make their own decision. RSA, an authority, has made decisions for years. Very little input from four superiors. They take on their own debt and all. The only action, once an authority is formed, other than trying to convince our members that both are against this or that, we could go to legal battle with the broadband authority to stop action. Once you are appointed, there's not a whole lot that the board can do. And once it's stood up by the S E C and all.
Actually, generally, I agree. I mean, a lot of it, you know, the statutory work on broadband authority is not as developed as it was from water and sewer, I guess for such, some obvious reasons, but, you know, the other aspect of this is, does it make sense in terms of, and the reasoning authority exists in rural areas is for economy stability. And the question becomes, wouldn't there be any of the economy stability? You know, if our mountains were all of uniform height and sloping, this would all be relatively straightforward. You know, we'd just erect, you know, whatever we needed. It's a type of these things that, you know, keep from having done that. Then you ask that, you know, does a broadband authority lend itself to regional cooperation? I don't know the answer to that question. It could very well. I know that our neighboring counties have done a little more on these issues than we have, but the question becomes a critical last issue. The other aspect of this, and I am way out of that by most, but my understanding is that the technology has evolved in relatively quickly and you may not be hundred-foot tall towers to have the coverage that we have. I've heard something about, and I just want to see how this could work, but you could actually have repeaters in the median of certain highways. I still don't understand how that could work, but I had something I read online from, I think the, I was getting feedback from Boston University, if I'm not mistaken. But the idea is, this is a fluid technology and the solution from Madison County may not yet have been developed or been publicized yet. So I mentioned that because the idea of us getting in the internet service provider is this is probably not something Madison County wants to take, but I think at some level, you know, if you're on the.
Sounds like the task force has a lot of work to do.
Could I ask this task force keeping question?
Yes.
And it may not be relevant at all. I, I understand how the official authority, the one that you got behind, would work with the findings and all, but I guess it's like you and the board supervisors. All right, this task force is going to need, and they start developing some plans, and when it comes down to money. Do you all, you will, the board supervisors will always retain the right to approve or not approve money for it? Or it depends on how it comes to you?
I don't know how it comes. I remember a little bit, once you, once you become an authority, you get.
Well, I'm not talking.
You've got some different thresholds and then of course with twenty percent of money and the task force, I would certainly think that the amount of money is of great matter. I mean, if you're talking about hiring like consultant for, I don't know, a thousand bucks or something, that's something, yeah, probably, no big deal. Hopefully a seer. But if you're talking about big, big money, then.
And I'm thinking about like Ray says, if it remains a task force and not an official authority, which I do understand when you reference R E C. Okay. Is, is this grants? So the task force, if either one's doing the grant, depends on what they are, depends on what they need? No, I don't like, okay, talk about a job.
Yeah, it's not going to happen by next month either.
That's true, but the other part of this, this is done, and this is why it's true, it's often, some counties, you know, put this in their economic development field. That's where they have writing grants. There are larger communities that, you know, have professional grant holders to do this sort of thing. The question becomes, you know, find out what other people are doing, to find out what successful counties have done, and still their idea.
Any other comments on that?
All right, one thing while we're all gathered here. There was mentioned, there's a woman that lives in Nethers that helped Rappahannock with their, who has her name?
Peter.
Was it you, Peter? The woman in Nethers that helped Rappahannock with, with their, with their broadband pursuit.
I, I don't know the answer to this question.
Chuck.
I have her name.
Chuck knows who.
Oh, Chuck knows, okay. All right, all right, I get with Chuck because.
I gave me her name the other day.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Appreciate it. Sounds like we got a lot of work to do.
Sorry, I want to be clear.
Yeah. It's a little different than what I envisioned. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, is review of the VDOT, Virginia Department of Health or RSA approval of S U P rezoning subdivision site plans. In the past, as you know, we've had issues of, as what the ordinance reads, especially with special use permits, that before it's granted, it says that they have to have the health department and VDOT approval. And it's an issue that's been going on now for several years. So we are, proposal is to go back and look at that issue and try to come up with something that specifically.
I, I thought it did not, I thought it said it didn't have to have those, the code. Are you sure it says that? I thought, I thought it actually said that.
Under the special use permit? I think it's only under the special use permit where it says that.
Okay.
The other ones, the way I read it, I didn't see that in there, but I noticed in the board's last meeting where the issue came up, we talked about not only S U Ps but rezoning subdivision site plans. So I figured if we're going to look at it, we'll look at all of it and see why, if anything, needs to be done with those. Get this thing clarified once and for all, of whether we need health department VDOT approval on these things and at what stage, especially on special use permit, to me, sometimes you don't need health department VDOT approval. You know, other times, depending on what the S U P is, I think you would need it. So I was thinking about signing that to one of the committees where they would.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Man?
What, what my man Cameron has said is that Clay said the board of supervisors would make a decision, so we were all agree on that it was confusing.
At the last meeting, they have, I have it here in my notes, where they have asked the planning commission, work within the county planner, and come up with something that clarifies this once and for all. That's where we are. So what I would like to do is, Peter, I'm going to sign that to your committee. And as I've said before, since we have a lot on the plate of the two committees, that you can delegate that if you so desire, as being the chairman of the committee.
When you, this is, this is the committee, could you, could you send me an email on what committee it is?
Yes, I will. We missed you at the last meeting, but yes, I will send that to you, plus some other information that I have laying on my desk at home. Okay. Does Ray have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, it really kind of varies. I mean, I know with some special use applications, you want to know what they need and who the authority is, but look, look at the Crest array one. We obviously did not want the applicant to go out and perk fifty perk sites before the S U P. So it kind of varies from application to application. I know when I started, there were a lot of times where you had something on the agenda and you were waiting to get these, you know, no, maybe it could have been a situation where you said, we'll approve you if you get this, you know, these things done. But it seemed like that was kind of the comment, it came up and it was, it was tabled, it came up and it was tabled. You had to kind of wait until all these, really depends on the application, but since I've been here, there's really only been one time, I think it's been one table, one thing has been tabled since then, since I've been here. And then the last one with wire, I mean, that was so straightforward and simple. I mean, we had an answer from VDOT within two days. And I will say, as far as VDOT goes, I've said to anyone, they're an easy organization to work with and get answers out of. We don't hear that a lot of times, but the two folks that work at this county will call, meet, we had a phone call the other day, somebody wanted to do a farm stand. Well, it's okay, it's my right, I guess, by exemption, but I don't know about your entrance, so we got a phone call the other day, VDOT, engineer, assistant engineer, they told me what it would need.
Well, it's not so much whether it's simple or not, it's on what happens every time we get one of these cases.
Well, it, like I said, it could vary. I mean, but I think ultimately, you know, with special use permit, again, I don't see it as a problem really, moving forward. Maybe you want to clarify it. I mean, we haven't had too many situations where, other than Mr. Dwyer's, which again was pretty, pretty simple, I wouldn't, we can look at it, but again, I don't think there've been many instances, at least in one year and eight months, where we really have had to really sit down and say, you know, should we approve this because we don't know it? We know what VDOT wants, pretty much. We know what the V D H will require. So I guess we can look at it.
But in the last board supervisor meeting, January twenty sixth, they assigned this to the planning commission to look at and review and come up with something to, so we don't have to answer this question every time the issue comes up. So Peter, I'm going to sign that to your committee, and I have some other information that I will send you. So thanks for touching where we are. Anybody else?
Can I show one thing, just off subject? Just today I saw the paper, the daily progress, and I thought it was a perfect paper for planners and people who work in local government. It said, first heading is real estate prices soar, and it goes into all the real estate and sales in the region. Here it talks about the county planners are mulling increases to the planning fees and different things. And then right here, broadband authority expands wireless to three thousand houses. So I just think, that's like a slam dunk of everything we talk about, work on almost, you know?
Right. And we've heard that before.
Right.
Ray, you just can make a photocopy of that and that's going to be your report at nine thirty?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's every, that's a, you know, plan, planner's paradise.
And Volta Brewery was established up there. They struggled with their internet and broadband, and they had to take some special work to get what they needed up there. So it's an issue throughout the county, not throughout the county, but in a lot of places. But it does help, because I understand it's one of the first questions when somebody goes about property, do they have a good broadband or internet connection, whatever? You've got to ask that question first, don't come in on later and say, well, we didn't know it.
So they want to be isolated with connectivity?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But they don't want to see any towers.
Right.
Okay. So Peter, thank you. Anything else on that issue? At the last board supervisor meeting that I attended, there were several issues that was discussed. One of them was the broadband, the other was the issue that we just finished discussion. Lot of financial issues and committee appointments, et cetera, et cetera. And they talked about Tovaros and people getting shots and that kind of stuff. But the other thing that came up, and they talked about town sidewalks, but there was an issue discussed about parking, no parking signs within the town, and who enforces them, and there seems to be some confusion there, and it's an issue to be worked out later. That pretty much sums up in a nutshell what was discussed, unless I missed something.
You're right on.
Okay. Thank you. Last thing on the agenda that I have is the, Fay has done some research on a fee for solar applications, which there is none presently. The county does not have a fee for that like it does for wireless communication facilities, which is two thousand dollars. Fay, would you like to?
Right. Yeah, I'll tell you what I've found so far. One thing that I mentioned about, I think it's two thousand dollars, I think it's Page County's five, for wireless cell tower.
Okay.
They're, they're all over the place. They're, they're all over the place.
Right.
One thing, when you start looking at fees, when you start looking at a whole lot of things, it's not really about the state, um, it's all over the place. I mean, some counties have things, other counties have things, $25 still, you know, it's crazy. Now, with, with commercial solar facilities, that's the large-scale commercial that we have in ordinance. And we, we put all in the ordinance, we built in all of the extra costs, which is perfectly fine to do, almost everybody does that. You pass all that cost on to the company. They don't care about the millions of dollars, if they really want it, they're willing to pay it. So that's not so much a problem, although we are going to have costs and we always have to have fees. And I'm not sure how it gets generated in the counties or, um, you know, so like if volume has to be as high, like I don't know what the fee goes to work for a virus power, I have no idea.
Gentlemen? Thank you. Go ahead.
And so, um, anyway, um, Cawpepper County, uh, there are three ways, but you can have a general fee, which would make it kind of concise, you know, concise and simple. But Cawpepper County, uh, assesses their fee by the, a certain number, that's a dollar and a half, I think, per disturbed land. Um, other counties, um, let's see, was it Page County that I did? I, I couldn't find my notes tonight, but I have it. Um, there are three ways you can, they assess the fees, not usually straight out. So they vary. Uh, either by the disturbed land, a certain amount, or, um, number of panels in the solar facility, or, um, um, the other one is wattage. I mean, how much, how big is it going to be and a certain amount for that? So I, I don't know where to go with recommending, I don't know that a flat fee is exactly what we want to do.
Right now, we have nothing.
We have nothing.
County has nothing.
So I, I just need to know where we're going and, you know, whether we want to go by the panel, like, or do we want to go by the disturbed land, like of the 100 acres that they have, only 50 is disturbed, then we would assess that for a fee. Uh, or do we want to do better wattage, might, you know? I don't know, gigawatts. I don't know where to go with it. So what makes the most money for us?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the easier one be the wattage on the basis that disturbed land, you're still occupying a specific space that potentially they wouldn't disturb us a gift in the end of it? Based on solar panels, you definitely could do like that based on technology change and size of a panel. Um, it seems like that's the easiest direction to go, wouldn't it?
Well, to me, the wattage would be good because we know what they're, they certainly have to know and tell us what they're going to be, what they have, what they're making. Like we can start out with a fee and they have to do a report. Anyway, I think in our, in our plan, they have to report back to us each, each year, review just what they're doing, not necessarily change anything. So one of the things we want to know under the special use would be, what are you producing?
So with a fee then, because it's based on wattage, wattage would determine how much really ground disturbance would be and how many panels, et cetera.
That's three different ways.
Okay, but if you did it on wattage, it would, by accident or whatever, cover the other two areas too.
Well, it doesn't matter, the other two areas don't matter.
Yeah, we'd cover that and what Clay was saying, we could do it based on wattage, that would seem to me to cover the area disturbed and number of panels, whatever, so we could just approach it up, we just recommend that a fee based on wattage, uh, that might be the way to go.
That's what I'm thinking, is we do have built in, and hopefully we can make sure that if we have, if they, if there needs to be a specific engineer kind of person who knows solar to help out with reviewing even planes, we pass that on to everybody there. Each county's not got theirs done yet, they're really fighting it, um, and they're having some issues, I'm sure you know about them. Um, but they pass everything on, everything that's written in, it's a huge, we don't have these facilities, we've already said we don't have an extra electrical person, inspector to go out there, what would they ever do anyway? I mean, this, this might be very different than what they're trained to do. So everything gets passed on as best we can, but this basic fee, for me, I think it would be the wattage, I've heard. Is that what you want to go with and I'll look around and some?
Are we just going to, uh, demonstrate the application?
When they apply.
Right.
Part of the fee.
Review the application. Review the application. What are we talking about here? That's all.
And we might have to write in, uh, I don't know if, I don't know enough about that to know whether or not, say, a, a company comes in, well, and they only build part of it, like enough to minimize their wattage output at the beginning, but they have enough land, you know, they'd have to go in for a new upgrade on the S U P, right? And then could we assess more, you know, we would assess more fee then. So I guess you write that in, I don't know how to do that from a legal standpoint, but, but we have to figure that out. I mean, I'm thinking probably different scenarios it could be.
Well, why don't you, one of your team members, if you search that, unless, unless somebody has another recommendation suggestion, I think we need to recommend something to the county, because there's nothing there right now.
All right.
Uh, to come up with some kind of fee, it sounds like.
I'll have to cross something, I have enough resources that I can buy.
Okay.
We'll, we'll go with that.
All right.
Okay.
Let me know which timeline is on that. Okay, uh, anybody else? So the next meeting is going to be, oh, the April meeting is going to be in the fire station, I understand? Uh, since they're going to be rehabbing this building, but that's April. Fire station, this is the way the email read. Fire station.
Well, I can check it out, because we'll, we'll definitely have it before the meeting, we'll have an email letting you know where to go.
Right. Thank you. So everybody knows their, what's your emails on, where are we going to meet and when? Uh, I have nothing else on the agenda, that covers everything. Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I was vaccinated today and was really impressed by Madison County's setup over here at the fire. It was, it was very impressive.
They're still doing it? I thought they just did it yesterday.
They have vaccinated 417 people. Madison County Red. Right? It looks like they're going to.
They'll do it again next week.
Two to four next week, start with the 65 and older and then start working on the list.
And who do we contact to get on that list? Extinction agent, grand jargis. Okay.
That and G, he's pulling up.
There's a survey.
Where you go online to the health department and fill out a questionnaire that they have and they'll give back to you.
That's one of Charlotte's.
And the one, the one they had, we had part of, um, two weeks ago and they held a Daniel check for the whole week, that one was very well done, extremely.
Thank John Shear. John Shear deserves tremendous, thank you, from Madison County. He will not ask for anything, you seem pleased with that, he's, he's wanted to put all this together.
When is the next time, um, agricultural workers?
It should be, there one day, it should start, 65 and older, already started, agricultural workers, they'll start rolling out, we're supposed to get 100 decks, but we put the thing right now. We will hand over the supply and allow it.
Anything else? Danny?
Mr. Hyde has a comment. Your, your agenda does say things from the public, yes?
Uh, yes, if you have something you would like to add, I, please step up.
Well, I don't know whether this thing will be working. For those who don't know me, my name is, there you go. So for those who don't know me, my name is Clint Hyde. I actually am the owner, operator of the internet service provider that is based in this county, just down the street, a block. Uh, and I have been working this problem for about three and a half years at this point. So I do know a fair amount about that and what is going on in other counties and so forth. Uh, and, and I would certainly like to say I'm going to be real unhappy if the county decides it needs to compete with me. That would be, I would consider that a horrific slap in the face. Now, if you think I'm doing a lousy job, I'd like you to tell me you think I'm doing a lousy job, but that's a really bad way to go about that. Uh, and I would also like to be a participant in whatever this task force is, partly because I do know an awful lot about this problem and I do know who all the competition is in the county and in adjacent counties and what they're doing and how they're doing it and what it costs and the level of effort involved, et cetera. So in lieu of rambling indefinitely, I could talk your ears off for a solid day or a week covering all of the bloody information in here that I've picked up over the last several years. And, and Clay will be happy to tell you about how I tend to ramble. Um, but that was, that's essentially it. This is a thing that needs doing, we all agreed and certainly Clay said it well at the last board meeting, that we need to tackle this. And the need for that has changed, interestingly, in the last 12 months. I figure January a year ago, had anybody here, even including me, ever done a Zoom meeting or you know what that was? Right? No idea. And now, we all do them all the time. It is just a massive change in what we are doing and what we are needing and it entirely separate from what the school system's needs are. So, uh, if you all want to do a serious effort tackling this stuff, then boy, it's certainly time to go do that now for sure. Overdue even, time to do that at this point. But I would like to be seriously involved in what's going on with that without having to become a member of the board or the planning commission or something like that, because I do actually operate a business that is competing in that marketplace. So, that's my.
Thank you, Clint. Anybody else? If not, I get a motion to adjourn. Got it first, can I use a second? All in favor, say aye. This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.